Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, August 3, 2021, meeting of the Union County Board of Education. I call this meeting to order. We have everybody here. Mr. Price is on the phone. Mrs. Merrill is taking her son to college, so she won't be here this evening. Mr. Chaplinwick Weaver is going to give the invocation. Thank you.
Father, we come to you tonight in prayer in the name that is above every name, and that's the name of Jesus. And we thank you that we can openly pray to you and that we can bring our petitions to you and that you hear us. And, Father, as this Board of Education gets ready to talk about issues that will impact our students and our faculties and our drivers of our buses and everyone that will be impacted by everything that goes on this year in our school year, we ask that you just give us wisdom as we figure out what needs to be done so that the students of this county will get the education they deserve, that faculty and the bus drivers and everybody will have safety, and that you will continue to bless us as a nation as we continue to look to you for answers as you lead, guide, and direct us. And we thank you for this, and we pray it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate it. Next is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like everyone to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is public comment. As there is a waiting list, the Board will need to consider whether to expand public comment period. Is there a motion to expand the public comments period for up to an additional 30 minutes?
Motion to expand.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. So the first speaker... Oh, wait. Sorry. I have to do my regular thing. At the regular meeting, so we have 60 minutes have been allotted for public comments. The Board will not respond to public comments. However, a member may ask that the chair obtain clarification. Speakers will be called in the order that they signed up to speak. If a speaker is not present when his or her name is called, the opportunity to speak will be considered waived. Only person signed up may speak. Speakers may not give their time to another person or have someone else speak on their behalf. Individuals may address the Board for a maximum of three minutes. Any person who is appointed representative for a group may address the Board for a maximum of five minutes. A representative must state his or her affiliation prior to speaking or will be assigned to the three-minute comment period. The Board will not hear in open session, one, complaints about the performance of the school personnel; two, personnel issues; three, confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, our staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Dr. Brad Breedlove, Chief Academic Officer; Dr. Bishan Harris, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources; and Jared McCraw, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, are here to assist. The first speaker is Bryant Helms. You have three minutes.
Hey, good evening. My name is Bryant Helms. I'm going to speak. Can I?
I encourage you guys to stand strong in your convictions and the stance that you elected to take on behalf of UCPS students and remain a shining beacon for parental rights. We cannot go backwards. Last month, I provided an example of how biased teaching in theologies like CRT have permeated the curriculum in Union County schools when I quoted a book used for a fourth-grade diversity project entitled "Not My Idea: A Book About Whiteness." I challenged this Board to consider if you wanted your own children to be taught the concepts that it explores, concepts like teaching that racism is one-sided, so-called white privilege, and that our country, that men and women of all colors and beliefs have fought and died to protect, is systemically racist. It's not. Let me be clear, concepts like these have no place in our children's minds in our schools. No one should ever be taught to be ashamed of the color of their skin. Curriculum that looks through a racial lens only causes division and undermines a founding principle of our great nation that knows no color other than red, white, and blue. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It's time that we stop looking at everyone's differences and begin looking at what we have in common as citizens of the greatest nation in the world. It's time that we enact a policy for curriculum that doesn't attempt to eliminate racism with more racism. We cannot go backwards. It is also time that we look at our COVID protocols. The bozos in Raleigh have pledged resources to assist with testing in schools across our state. They have also incentivized mask wearing with quarantine recommendations and toolkit. I urge the Board to remember that the function of UCPS is to provide children with an education and not medical care. That is the function of healthcare providers, and there are plenty in this county. Our kids will not be tested at school. Our kids will not accept vaccine mandates. Do not punish our kids that opt not to wear masks with quarantine protocols that lack common sense. We cannot go backwards. I urge you guys to remember the following quote. It's one that I try to apply every day. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandra Green. You have three minutes.
My name is Sandra Green. I'm the parent of a UCPS elementary school student. I'm just going to stress some points that define CRT, or culturally relevant teaching, as defined by Union County. CRT is a Marxist ideology, a theory analyzing the world, bourgeoisie versus proletariat, or working man versus business or elite. CRT began in the '60s and was adopted by Angela Davis, a Marxist and devout Communist. When you peel back each layer of CRT, you'll find, one, skin color is what matters. Our country was founded on biblical teachings. Neither slave or free, nor Greek or Jew, we are all free in the blood of Jesus Christ, as written by the Apostle Paul in the Book of Philippians. MLK built an entire movement stating, "I don't care about the color of your skin but the content of your character." With CRT, we're doing the opposite, saying your skin is only what matters. Number two, CRT believes that racism is present everywhere, schools, church, work, every institution, every relationship, every aspect of life. Its advocates look for it everywhere and therefore cannot be satisfied. It's an activist black hole that threatens to destroy all that we have. Three, it's a totalitarian system. Dialogue is evil. It teaches that if you disagree with it, you must be racist. It teaches you what to think instead of how to think. It relies on interest conversion. White people only give black people opportunities and freedoms when it's in their own interest, and therefore doesn't trust any attempts to make it better. It's against free societies and treats it as socially constructed group, so there's no individuality. It's based on emotion and feelings, not fact or wisdom. CRT fights science, reason, evidence, and tries to destroy all the progress America has made with civil rights. It's extremely dangerous. When we govern people, we can govern them by two ways, by talking, speaking, or convincing, which is the American way, or by force, which is the Mao way, the Stalin way, the Mussolini way. Separating children by their skin color and teaching this theory, they're deemed permanently as oppressors or oppressed that is not teaching truth or history unless you are racist. It's teaching children that race skin color is determining factor for their future and where their destinies lie. It's corroding our country from the inside out. Teaching our children that you always need to push one down to lift someone else up, that's socialism. We're not a socialist country. CRT is not an honest dialogue. It's a tactic used by communism to dumb people down. An honest dialogue doesn't oppress or implement hatred or injustice. It's to communicate without deceiving. We're not here today to get your agreement, but we want action to ban all forms of CRT. We don't want to divide our children or belittle them. So I urge you to think twice before you indoctrinate with racist theories. You cannot cure racism with more racism. As a parent, my job is to teach my child about life, values, and morals. Your job, or excuse me, the teacher's job, is to teach math, science, proper grammar, and to mold the next generation of well-rounded American patriots, not indoctrinating many socialists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Justine Libby.
I have a question. Would you like to ask a question?
You have three minutes.
I haven't started yet.
I'm just telling everybody said the same thing, so...
Thank you. Six feet apart, right? Recently, a comment was left within a radicalized Facebook group of parents that read, "Diversity is no more than anti-white. The US was founded and built by white Christians, and we will fight to keep it that way." Three of our board members are aligned with this group, and it is concerning that all of these individuals would sit by as leaders in our county government and not say anything. This very Board has had two members resign due to racist comments, and several that probably should have resigned already. An entire diversity committee was formed to help with these issues, and yet our Board cosigns these types of comments. A concerned Union County parent reached out to the Board members about this to understand how the Board members felt about this comment. Melissa had the most troubling response of all. She said, "Thank you for sharing the information below. I do not agree with you that they are boasting to make America all white or all Christian. What I read below is the concern for anti-white and anti-Christian beliefs." Melissa did not disagree with the statement. In fact, she doubled down on it. She said that the people in this radicalized group, which include her, were concerned about anti-white and anti-Christian beliefs being taught. She also looked another Board member in the eyes and told them that systemic racism does not exist in America during a policy meeting last week, told them that their and countless others' lived experience is not real. When will the gaslighting end? What is this actually about? Around the country, radicalized groups of people have watched too much far-right television. They have been told that the schools are implementing this boogeyman CRT and that it will be bad for the kids. They have been told that their white babies are going to be so sad and so hurt when they learn about the history of colonization and enslavement this country was founded on. These groups are concerned about their white children learning that with the color of their skin, they enjoy a certain privilege and benefit of the doubt that black, indigenous, and other people of color do not get to enjoy. The very fact that this is their concern, when in our community, black children are experiencing racism, is privileged personified. This is not an anti-white statement that I'm making. This is an acknowledgement of the reality of the world we live in. To the members of the School Board and the members of the local and surrounding community that are members of these radicalized groups, just drop the act. Stop talking about CRT. We've seen what you're really about. You're about keeping it white and Christian. To be clear, teaching history doesn't affect how we feel about ourselves. Yes, part of that history is admitting that Christopher Columbus didn't discover a new world. He landed here, where indigenous people live, and began to colonize it. When we teach about the origins of plantations, and I learn about chattel slavery and how enslaved people were treated, and then I learn about the Civil War, Reconstruction, until Jim Crow, the Voting Rights Act, I don't feel bad. I don't feel bad about being white. I feel empowered with the knowledge to help enact change. I feel compelled to do my part to dismantle racist systems. I feel capable of being a citizen of this country. See you next Tuesday.
The next speaker is Jess Atherton. You have three minutes.
Diversity, equity, and inclusion are American values, the things that have driven our forefathers and the greats who followed. On this, we're all in agreement. Where I believe we falter, though, is understanding what it means to take on the mantle of these values for ourselves and put them into action, what it means to embolden our students. I see no more clear evidence that the 3-2A Employee Code of Ethics policy proposal... This policy amounts to a muzzle on our teachers that will be weaponized by parents to prevent open discussion of historical fact and critical thinking of patterns and change over time that are so essential to an understanding of history. More importantly, it sends a message that some feelings will matter more than others, and we must cancel anything that could hurt those feelings. Yeah, that's right, cancel, censor. Because let's be clear, that's what this amounts to. You decry concerns over indoctrination in schools, and yet here's a policy proposal before us that seemingly threatens teachers, as it is included as an addendum to the Code of Ethics, not as a standalone document, into only discussing certain topics, certain narratives, certain parts of history. To be more blunt about it, I want to run through a few things I wasn't taught in school but that are a huge part of the fabric of our history. If you want to play along, please feel free to raise your hand if you ever learned these in K through 12. Navajo code breakers saved over 20,000 lives during World War II by using their native languages to transfer critical and top-secret information on troop movements. As it was not code, our enemies couldn't break it, this in spite of the fact that over 30 states still had laws in their books banning indigenous people from using and teaching their own languages. No? Okay. Helen Keller was more than a deaf and blind girl taught to finger spell. She was one of the first disabled graduates from Harvard University School for Women. She was an activist for disability rights and equality. She was a founding member of the ACLU, and her donations established her local chapter of the NAACP. She was highly active in politics and had visited over 70 different countries by the time she died. Did you know that during World War II, there was a Japanese internment camp here in Monroe? Did you know that after the Brown v. Board of Education ruling, two counties in Virginia closed all public schools for over seven years rather than integrate? That the state of Louisiana, having not integrated their schools by 1975, won a Supreme Court case on the basis that they didn't have enough time to develop policies to integrate 19 years after the ruling? Did you know that Shirley Chisholm was the first woman to run for president? These are but a few examples, some that may paint America in a bad light.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Thank you. See you next Tuesday.
Next up is Stacy Stacks. Three minutes.
I'm Stacy Stacks. There have been questions about why I'm speaking in Union County when I live in Mecklenburg, and that's easy to answer. There's some confusion about jurisdiction and impact. Your jurisdiction meshes the county lines, but your impact is felt throughout the region, including neighboring counties. It'll make more sense later when you have to seek medical attention in Mecklenburg County because hospital resources here in your smaller facilities are overrun. In April of this year, the Director of the National Institute of Health gave congressional testimony that pediatric long-haul COVID symptoms are showing in 10% to 15% of kids who have survived the acute infection. In Union County alone, there have been 3,690 confirmed COVID cases among student-aged children, and that's the floor. With widespread undertesting of children, we know the number is at least that high. 10% to 15% is 370 to 560 kids who are already feeling the lingering symptoms of COVID infection. The long-term impacts are going to change the landscape of everything this year. Seemingly out of nowhere, kids are going to be falling asleep in class, unable to focus on what would have been routine tasks for them, and less able to exert themselves during recess or PE. There are growing reports of long COVID symptoms like myocarditis, which is swelling of heart tissue, respiratory insufficiency, and neurological CTs that mirror advanced Alzheimer's patients. The trajectory of these kids' lives are going to be changed. Parents who reject scientific fact will blame the virtual school year or learning loss, and the district will spin out on failing grades and failing test scores. Medical professionals will do their best to scramble for diagnoses. We'll have an influx of new disability claims with behavioral issues and mental health concerns that have a physiological root. Your decisions impact an already overwhelmed healthcare system and chronically underfunded education system. And while everyone's befuddled and scratching their heads, our kids are going to pay the price for the decisions that you make here. If or when the virus reaches your door and you find yourself taking up hospital resources in your neighboring county, please let my words ring in your ear. It did not have to be this bad. Put aside your ego, do the right thing for children, and make masks required. Thank you.
Next speaker is the UCAE, Elena Brown and Pam Carlton. You have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Houlihan, I am the President of the Union County Association of Educators, and this is my Vice President, Elena Brown. I'm speaking in reference to the teachers. And so we had a little poll of our teachers, and so I do have some information for you guys. So teachers are currently on the edge already, and we are two weeks away from school starting. Teachers feel that the county has a better understanding of the safety precautions needed than we did last year, but they also feel that with the new variant, they are not sure if we are ready. Teachers want to know why we are not offering a virtual option for our highly vulnerable children and the ones who have their means that are compromised. There are teachers that are ready and committed to do 100% virtual if needed. Teachers said they are not willing to do two jobs again this year for the price of one. Teachers want to know why you, the Board of Ed, are toe-in-the-line when it comes to their First Amendment rights if you add the language that Mr. Sigh submitted for review to prevent us from teaching about systematic racism. They feel that they have the right to have their own opinions about America and the flag. We don't all have the same views about the history of this country. Some teachers feel that you, the Board of Ed, don't value us as professionals who went to college to educate children. We should clearly know that we don't go in depth with teaching history. We only teach snapshots, and the students, as they get older, they tend to explore those ideas a little bit further. Most kids are taught the ugly truth about history at home, not at school. Teachers feel that you, the Board of Ed, are heavily weighing your decisions solely on political allies and not the students and teachers of this county. Some teachers are upset about the pay raises that the cabinet staff and the superintendent received. Teachers feel like they were not congratulated nor appreciated enough for the extended work that they completed last year. A simple thank you was not enough, but once again, we got the smallest percentage of all the said groups and then the majority of the work. Teachers are also concerned about COVID. They feel that if they get sick, that they will have to use all their sick leave since the COVID leave has expired.
Thank you. So since we were last here, a lot has changed. Last week, the CDC updated their recommendation that everyone needs to wear a mask indoors regardless of vaccination status, much like the WHO's consistent recommendation. They also, by their definition of high community transmission, set that number at 100 new cases per 100,000 residents or 8% positivity. Since we were last here, Union County has ballooned to 196 new cases per 100,000 residents and over 11% positivity. This is dangerous, especially for unvaccinated people like our young students, who are at a much higher risk. On that note, you might also have heard that the AAP, the Department of Health and Human Services, and Governor Cooper have all stated everyone in school buildings needs to wear masks, vaccinated or not. You may have also heard that the study from June touting increased carbon dioxide levels in children wearing masks has been retracted by JAMA due to its inaccurate scientific performance and data. Why are elected officials without credentials in medicine, public health and safety, or epidemiology ignoring all the expert advice? You cannot say you're unaware when countless pediatricians have emailed you. What infection rate is acceptable to this Board? What hospitalization rate? What death rate? How many people need to be sick for you to follow the guidance of every medical organization in the world? We hope you consider listening to these experts for the sake of every unvaccinated person, including our students under 12, and update your mask policies. UCAE has received messages from parents stating that their child will not be able to attend school safely due to this Board's optional mask vote. How will you ensure these children are granted their constitutional right to public education? We have received letters from staff and parents asking about contact tracing, quarantines, leave, to care for students, sick leave for teachers, and so much more. How will you answer them? What are your plans and policies for protecting and caring for our community given your decision? And why are those plans not being communicated? Some will say, "My kids are healthy, and so am I, so I see no risk." Well, this is an irresponsible and unempathetic position to take, and we should all do our part in caring for everyone in our community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Samantha Don. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Personnel Political Activity Section of UCPS policy states that political and controversial issues may be taught in the classroom, but it must be done without personal bias and with reasonable effort to present all sides of issues. This policy is designed to prevent indoctrination and prepare students to think about societal concerns in an unbiased manner, which is important as they are developing critical thinking skills. As students mature, they can determine their own beliefs and engage in activism as it suits their own values. Systemic racism, for example, is highly controversial and is included in the North Carolina Social Studies Standards Glossary. An educator may have a strong bias regarding it that must be considered to ensure that students are receiving history and societal views on it in an unbiased manner with all sides presented equally. I absolutely want my kids to be taught unbiased American history that is not watered down, including our history of racism, but I also want to balance the brutal history with celebrating how leaders of all races join together, creating laws that protected and promoted equality. So let's implement all those new standards that discuss discrimination as study this discrimination and how the nation came together to solve it. By putting an equal emphasis on that part of history as well, we can inspire this generation to come together as previous generations did. One solution to the debate surrounding teaching controversial issues such as systemic racism, white privilege, and anti-racism theories is transparency of course content. Providing course content on controversial issues allows parents the ability to review it for potential bias or to opt into an alternative lesson. There are concepts that I believe do not belong in the classroom, such as individuals being judged solely based on their immutable traits. Therefore, I ask the Board to please approve the amendment to Policy 3-2A today to keep those harmful comments out of UCPS. Finally, I do want to talk about equity or equal outcomes as it has come to be defined. We are not doing our students any favors by giving them a false sense of reality. Equity disincentivizes hard work and reduces personal responsibility. It ignores how some students at our more privileged schools fail and how some students at our underprivileged schools are highly successful. Individual choices, support at home, culture, and socioeconomic issues influence success in classroom and beyond. Developing positive personal behaviors and encouraging hard work will lead to more sustainable growth and success rather than giving them the idea that they are owed success. Success is not going to meet students where they are at. They, as individuals, must rise to the occasion. That is how real life works. Unbiased teaching of history should always provide a diverse set of viewpoints. So let's abide by UCPS policy by not implementing divisive rhetoric and encourage equality and unity in our schools. Thank you for your time and dedication to the students of UCPS. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Laura Casey. Three minutes.
Before I start, I would like to give a warning to some that...
Before I start, I would like to give a warning to some that what I'm going to say may include graphic accounts of racial violence. Please protect your peace as you are able. Early in the 2020 election cycle, I was with some friends when the topic of Robert Byrd came up, and I will never, ever forget one man's response to me. He looked at me and he said, I see, you're one of those benevolent white people for whom racism is just an intellectual problem. You have seen the statistics and you know that it exists, and it's real, but it is still that unknown boogeyman in the corner. You don't experience it. He went on to tell me about his experience. He said, as a 46-year-old black man born and raised in the Carolinas, I can tell you about your intellectual problem. I was too young to testify in the murder trial. See, I was 12 when my cousin was pulled out of our home in the night, hands tied together and drugged down the road behind a pickup truck for over two miles. I couldn't speak my truth, but I live it. In college, I opened my door to a white man shotgun in hand confronting me because his daughter had told him I touched her inappropriately, and the name Emmett Till ran through my mind as I worried about being tomorrow's headline. Two years ago, I was fired from a job because my four C hair was too unkempt for my sales position, simply for going out of my head the way God made it. You have never experienced this. I was in tears then as now, and I would expect you to experience empathy too. It is a human response, but it is what he said after that sits the most with me and why I share his words. He said, for you, you can rationalize things as good versus harm. You can question, tend, you can take a moment and make excuses, but for me, I always have to wonder whether that next racist interaction, and there will always be a next interaction, will have me drugged behind a pickup truck in the middle of the night or end with a man leaving my doorstep shotgun in hand stating he was sorry for the misunderstanding. I do not get to give the benefit of the doubt, and I need you to know this. I need to tell you these things so that you understand and so that you stop making excuses for the things that you don't see in the hopes that you'll stand beside me and fight this fight with me. This can't be an intellectual endeavor. This is my reality. I hear about how we want to teach all history, but I need this board to understand that this isn't just history for so many. This is a board member being banned from school properties after being censured by the very people that sit before us, then going on to sit as a county commissioner. This is Instagram pages created because after this event, and even after a second board member resigned over his own racist remarks, you don't understand that racism exists in our community. You think because somebody hasn't emailed you about it, it doesn't exist in our schools. This is having a black board member sitting in a meeting telling you about his lived experiences, and after chatting over him, having the confidence to say you don't believe systemic racism exists. When I had the previous conversation, what I wasn't was feeling guilty for being born white or born to be an oppressor. No, I felt empowered to work hand in hand with my community in the hopes that our tomorrows are better than today. As Kirkpatrick had said, when this is taught and discussed right, it is empowering for everyone, and that's the goal of the school board. Our students are watching you. I have left long-form remarks for each one of you that have a longer version of this. Who should I leave them with? There's a copy with your name for each person and three additional. I would hope that you would read them.
The next speaker is Kathy Powers. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to once again address the board. My family and I, especially my two boys, thank you a million times for making masks optional at the last meeting. I immediately went home and gave the news to my sons, and my seven-year-old said, yay, I can breathe. It has been quite a journey for us, and they are both excited to start school here in Union County and are grateful to be attending without masks. A few items in the updated toolkit jumped out at me, and I'd like to address them tonight. First, promoting vaccination. I honestly believe that everyone is just plain tired of hearing any form of the word vaccine. I know I am. I am asking that no money be spent on promoting vaccination regardless of where the money is coming from. I believe the government and the media are doing great at promoting vaccination, and it would be a huge waste of time and money for UCPS to get involved with that. Those who want it have either gotten it or will be first in line with their children to have them vaccinated once it becomes available for whatever age groups their children are in. Second, existing laws and regulations require certain vaccinations for children attending school. K through 12 administrators regularly maintain documentation of people's immunization records. However, and this is a big however, the COVID-19 injection is not required to attend school or play sports, and therefore documentation regarding anyone's vaccination status is not required either. To everyone listening at home, if you ask, if ask for documentation at school or really anywhere, just say no. We hold the power over our own information, and no is a small but pretty powerful word. Schools should not be asking COVID vaccination status of anyone. Lastly, the toolkit provides the ability for schools to implement a testing plan at no cost to the school or the district that includes both screening and diagnostic testing. Screen testing should be done in a way that ensures the ability to maintain confidentiality of results and protect student, teacher, and staff privacy. DHHS states that unvaccinated students and staff will randomly, they recommend be randomly tested. I just don't see how this can be done, one, confidentially, since when you single people out, you have already breached confidentiality, and everyone will know they are unvaccinated. And two, without asking for vaccination, vaccination status, which is none of anyone's business. The recommendations are being formulated so that you can strongline people into providing status. All this is going to do is divide people into two groups who are constantly fighting with each other. I'm starting to see a very divisive pattern happening, and it's breaking up families and breaking down society. I'm not sure what the end result will be, but I do know that if we don't rise up against it, we're going to have a huge problem on our hands in the future, and I don't want that for my children or any child. If I were you, I'd take the toolkit and throw it in the trash. It's completely useless. It's DHHS's way of saying they no longer require anything, but if something negative happens, they told you so. We've all had enough. Leave the teachers alone, leave the staff alone, and most importantly, leave our kids alone. Let's go back to the basics, reading, writing. Thank you.
Next up is Moms for Liberty, Brittany Bolden. Five minutes.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. First of all, I want to take a moment to acknowledge what you accomplished last month by voting for masks to be optional. Yes, this issue was about masks and the fact that they carried with them many detrimental and unintended physical, psychological, and developmental consequences. But I would like to highlight that this was also about more than just the mask. Around our country, we are seeing an attack on parental rights as an offshoot of the attack on individual rights. In many of these instances, limiting rights is rationalized by saying it's for the greater good. Might I remind you that everyone that ever, every totalitarian who has ever taken over their people used that excuse for the greater good? It's a ploy, and it provides, and it proves to be a successful time and time again as fear appears to trump even the best knowledge of history and the many warnings about repeating it. So by voting for the mask optional policy, you acknowledge both the detrimental and unintended consequences of masks and the importance of safeguarding parental rights, and I thank you. I would also like to thank you for considering the amendment to UCPS Policy 3-2A, which will make it clear that discrimination is not welcome or allowed at UCPS schools. I am asking that each of you vote yes to this amendment, as all children should be treated equally regardless of race, gender, religion, or who their ancestors were. Over the last few months, I have realized that there's a lot of confusion about what people are for, what people are against, what name things, things are called, or the obvious renaming and redefining of terms. The last two times I've spoken in front of this board, I centered my comments around truth. For me, truth is the hill that I figuratively die on. Without truth, there is no compromise, no reconciliation, no hope. Truth is foundational, and without it, everything fails and falls. If we have truth, we can work through the toughest of problems. So in an effort to possibly clear up some confusion, I decided to share with you some truths about Moms for Liberty. We are moms, we are dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and friends, and even a waitress or server, if you will, who are working to preserve parental rights. We believe in equality, which is where everyone is provided the equal opportunities to succeed. We also believe that there is work to be done in this area. We believe that the community should work together to solve these problems. This is not to be confused with equity, which is equal outcomes. If you give your kids a chore to do and say, you know what, I'll pay you some allowance when it's done, and then you find out that only one kid did the work and the other two goofed off, do you pay all three the same amount? I don't. I pay the one who did the work the money, and I give the other two an extra two jobs. We want equality. All the kids had an equal opportunity to do the job, not equity. Everyone gets paid regardless of what they do. We believe in teaching the truth about history, about the wrongs that were done, about the people who sought to right those wrongs, and about the reconciliation. We believe in teaching about all of the amazing men and women in our history who worked hard to overcome any obstacles they faced to fight for the God-given freedoms we have in this country. Freedoms we believe are given to all people, no matter their ethnic background, gender, or religion. We want every child to see themselves in the story of this nation. But we also want them to remember that America is called the land of opportunity. Our history books are filled with people of all ethnic backgrounds who took that opportunity and did amazing things. We believe in inclusion. Every single person deserves the opportunity to be the best that they can be. As someone who grew up with dyslexia and ADD, I made, it made such a difference in my life to have the necessary help to overcome those challenges, also while participating with my friends. We believe in teaching diversity. In fact, it's one of the joys of living in a country where there is so much diversity. We want to recognize the different cultures, talents, skin tones, hardships, and success stories to make this country, that makes this country so beautiful. That's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Thank you. Next up is Quinn Hargit. Three minutes.
Learning is a lifelong process, yet some of us have decided we have nothing left to learn, or that when we learn, feelings matter more than facts. You know what our brilliant teachers do when our students haven't been paying attention? They give a pop quiz. Today, I will be giving a pop quiz. Question one, this meeting is being held on the stolen land of which Native American tribes? Question two, less than 75 years ago, the population of Monroe was about 10,000. At the same time, the local KKK membership was in the thousands. In essay form, explain what impact that would have on the community, its systems, and what the lingering effects would be. Question four, please quote something Martin Luther King Jr. said other than "I have a dream" or by the content of their character. I skipped three. Question three, whose funeral did Rosa Parks speak at in 1996 in Monroe? Question five, 12 out of 46 presidents were slave owners. What is the percentage of 12 of 46? This quiz is a lesson for us all. Maya Angelou once said, "History, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be unwived, but if faced with courage, may not be lived again." That's it. That's it right there. We learn our history, we feel the pain, so we don't live it again. When we work through the shame of our painful past, we gain the most extraordinary human quality of all, empathy, the ability to understand and share the feelings of another. We are all part of history. My grandma, she made the best fried okra, but she served it on a plate of hate. My grandma was a racist. It's 2021. We know that racists don't always wear hoods or have swastika tattoos. Sometimes the racist is snapping beans with us on the porch. Sometimes the racist is grandma. I'm not saying this to cause discomfort or anguish or psychological despair. I'm saying this because it is the truth. It's my truth and many others, unfiltered. I don't need to present my history as inherently ideal. Learning about racism in my family, my community, and myself is the only way to destroy it. The changes to Policy 3-2A are nonsensical and unnecessary. They are a partisan ploy steeped in fear and racism. Our underpaid teachers don't need more constraints and micromanaging. This overreach will cause harm. Do not legislate the protection of uncomfortable feelings when discussing history, a history that some don't even want to acknowledge. Education is sometimes uncomfortable, but we learn the most when we step outside of our comfort zone. Board members, the only vote tonight to keep Union County Public Schools moving forward is a vote against this proposal. We have never needed it before, and we don't need it now. I know that it's not.
Melissa Merrill. Thank you. I have some documents also I'd like to leave. Who should I give those to? It's a little history. Mr. McCroft, please. I apologize. I had a tickle in my throat. I didn't want to stay. The next person is Erin Muldoon. You have three minutes.
Thank you to the board and Dr. Houlihan for your vote last meeting regarding masks. The majority of Union County parents are grateful to be given the choice. Now I want to ask that you help us curb the indoctrination of our children. Abram Kendi, creator of so-called anti-racist doctrines that lie at the core of CRT, claims that CRT is some imagined monster concocted by conservatives as a scare tactic to avoid a conversation about race. This is 100% false. The term anti-racism that is used by Kendi sounds non-threatening, but does not mean what you think. It redefines reality to assign guilt and blame solely on race. To classify people in such a manner is the definition of racism. This vocabulary manipulation or word salad is the reason this ideology has made its way into our institutions. Who doesn't want to be considered anti-racist? This divisive ideology looks to replace the American value of equality and of opportunity with a regime that assumes all white people are racist oppressors and the labels of all minorities as victims. It's a thought process that tells children male and female are just chosen identities, like a costume, and you can be one or both or anything in between. It tells them their country is wicked, its history is one atrocity after another, that the country's heritage can be broken down into a handful of discrete identity groups, and that some races and religions are good and others are bad. Here's a snapshot of some thoughts from a local outspoken proponent of CRT. Quote, "Pay attention to what's happening with groups like Moms for Liberty trying to change how we teach history in this country. Schools shape and form the next generation and are the backbone of our community." She is correct. They do help form the next generations, so it's even more imperative that it's done accurately. She implores the masses, petition and write your local school boards in support of teaching real history, then goes on to say, "These people want to worry about how their white kids might feel, but do they worry about how black kids have felt all these years in history class? Let's not pretend they care about any of it." And she then goes on to mention white privilege. No one has the right to judge my life or anyone else's based on their skin color. No one gets to tell my children they owe anything or what place in society they come from. This is the mentality of what they want to push to make white people uncomfortable. People who make these statements don't know me, and I'm sure have zero interest in doing so because I and my children have already been judged and been labeled solely by the color of our skin. This is racism, period. Like most Americans, I'm okay with you teaching my children factual history. What I'm not okay with is you teaching them that they are oppressors and that their peers are oppressed and vice versa. Children should be taught love, respect, and acceptance of others. They should be taught accountability for their own actions. We, as a society, have this habit of lobbing responsibility anywhere but where it truly belongs. We are solely responsible for our actions and no one else. Actions of today, not years past, not our ancestors, but our own actions and words. I look to a day when people won't be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Thank you.
Next speaker, Jessica Cook. Three minutes.
Good evening. First, I wanted to begin by saying thank you for all you've been doing for our kids and for listening to us parents. Last month, I came before you, and I asked for more transparency and curriculum oversight. I was very impressed when I watched the special curriculum meeting last week where you sat down and went through the new social studies standards for the first grading period. I know it was time-consuming and extra work for everyone involved, and it's not typical for a Board of Education to do such a thing. I want to seriously thank you for doing that. It's really important. And I wanted to add too, it was eye-opening to see how little our kids can be taught because of what comes down from the state. You pointed it out perfectly. Some topics get 10 minutes in the classroom. So for our friends who are speaking about history not being totally taught, it is not their fault, it's the state standards that cram so much into a short period of time. And I would just add too that anybody who wants to get further education on history, we have wonderful libraries here, and you can read as much as you want about whatever history that you want. As we start the new school year in a few weeks, I want to ask you to stand firm on your decision and keep masks optional. I know there are some people who disagree with that, but the evidence is overwhelming that transmission rates via children are extremely low, and that there are serious unintended consequences that have come from masking our kids. You heard it yourself from the young man who spoke at the last meeting who had to leave UCPS. That is why masks being optional is the only reasonable approach because it gives parents and children the choice, what is best for them. As you move on to discuss specific COVID protocols in the school, I would like to comment on a few topics. First, I ask that you do not ask or keep records of whether or not teachers have taken the vaccine. That is a personal and private medical decision. Identifying and labeling vax versus non-vax will create animosity and discrimination against peers, amongst peers, students, and staff. Furthermore, the COVID-19 vaccine is not on the state vaccine schedule that is required by State Statute 130A-152, which outlines the required scheduled vaccines. So quite frankly, I don't know how it would even be legal. So quite frankly, I don't know how it would even be legal for a school to keep records for a non-scheduled vaccine. Plus, please do not forget that in North Carolina, we have medical and religious exemptions per State Statute 130A-157. Next, please stop the 14-day quarantine protocols and do not single out the, um, single out masked or unvaxxed. That is discriminatory. Children cannot be forced to quarantine for 14 days over and over again just because they were near someone for a few minutes. Quarantine has always been for the sick, not for the healthy. Finally, if you continue to pull children out of the classroom, it will be devastating for their education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is James Townsend. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Last month, I came here and spoke about critical race theory, including a definition from Mechanica that used the words to define CRT with phrases like intellectual movement and loosely organized framework of legal analysis. I rush to express my thoughts around public schools' teaching CRT as facts, and I want to better elaborate. First and foremost, most in favor of making CRT part of the curriculum do with the explanation explanation to teach factual history or truthful history on the premise on how CRT may or may not have played a role throughout history, creating or maintaining social, economic, and political inequalities between different demographics. For the record, I am all for teaching children factual, truthful past events that led to racial inequalities so that we're not doomed to repeat those fates. However, I'm not here to talk about factual history. I'm here to talk about the theory, the movement, the promotion of division, not unity, today, not historically. From mainstream media to employers, today, it seems like it's all about skin color. Everywhere you turn, when others are referred to, too often, people are pre-labeled or described with color of their skin. And I'm sorry, anytime you have, anytime you describe a person by the color of their skin or being called out by what race they are, it's divisive, not inclusive. And now, we want to push this divisive and resentment-causing agenda onto our children. How's this to help? How are teaching children to look at skin color to determine how they feel about themselves and our others going to achieve anything but confusion, division, and resentment as a predefined position at an early age? This will not only create confusion and hostility among their peers, however, it will likely create misunderstandings within the family structure when parents disagree that, when parents disagree with what I can only refer to as a brainwashed child at the hands of the public school system. What's happened over the past few decades, when I was in, what's happened over the past few decades? When I was in school, we were taught not to judge others based on the color of their skin, rather look at their action and character. Now, we're proposing children look at their peers' skin color while suggesting one group should be ashamed of themselves and the other victim. How did we get here? Children are blank states. Children do not look at skin color. You give them attention and love, they give you attention and love in return. Skin color never plays a role, and if it does, it's taught. Bottom line, anyone who teaches CRT should be terminated, and that's not only limited to perfect direct communication, but that's also in any school agenda, any curriculum that's inadvertently passed along to our children, whether it's discovery.com or anything to that extent. It doesn't matter. We need our teachers to be looking at the curriculum before they pass it out. Simply put, it's the, it's the job, it is the job of public school system to teach our kids math, how to read, how to write, not to promote a narrative, movement, theory, or personal agenda. We are all educated adults. It does not take rocket science to figure out how introducing this type of narrative can only turn out one way: division. And we've heard the phrase, united we stand, divided we fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is James Dow. Three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your service and for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to speak about CRT. I live in Union County. My three children go to schools in this county, and any type of indoctrination of ideologies such as CRT is of the utmost concern to my family and my future, my kids' future. I believe it's a lie that some groups are pushing the idea that America is systematically racist. I believe it's wrong for our State Board of Education to push this language in their standards. I also believe that it is wrong that James Ford, who led the rewriting of the social studies curriculum, said he proposes that we remove that America is a great country. This is the greatest country in the world, and many leave their origin countries and come to America because they know so. Skin color is not a privilege. As Americans, we all have a privilege to live in this country. I reject the idea of injecting racism and politics into our kids and labeling them as oppressors or victims based on their skin color for events that happened 200 years ago. I reject the idea that North Carolina State Board of Education or our county are indoctrinating our children with hatred toward their country and each other. This is exactly what will happen if teachers teach that our country is inherently racist. Our local school board needs to be our line of defense from this insanity. I want to ask you, if this rewritten social studies curriculum was well-intended, then why was it done so quietly and jammed through over the summer and not giving districts or parents the time to review it? CRT does not teach true facts about our history. For those that think this is not being taught in schools, don't be naive and fool yourself. It will be taught in schools if we don't stand up. This is their plan, and this is what we are against. Many of our, many of us saw that what happened during the last CMS Board of Education meeting, I was shocked by the scene where three teachers who were in support of CRT walked up the auditorium steps, gave the cut-throat sign, and flipped off parents who spoke against CRT. This is a good example of how this ideology is dividing our community. My question to the members of this board, what is the end game for this? Why does the State Board of Education even want systemic racism, systemic discrimination, and gender identity in their glossary? Why are we trying to indoctrinate our children with this? You're the Board of Education. We expect you to pass the policies that support the desire of families in this county.
Thank you.
We need you to ban CRT and drive the curriculum so these standards are not in it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
The next speaker is Maria Reed. Did leave, okay. The next speaker is Marcella Marquette. Three minutes. Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to express my position against critical race theory. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother. However, I was first a young black girl raised in the projects of Harlem in the City of New York. My mother was told that I was not good enough to attend schools outside my black school district. I was safe to stay where I was at in all black school districts with limited resources. My mother fought hard, and she won. I became a part of a pilot program that bused black kids from Harlem to all-white schools in Queens, New York. I was the only black child in my class. I was loved, embraced, and pushed to excel, and this was throughout my life and every calendar throughout my educational background. You see, white people didn't hold me back. I was exposed to culture, diversity, and advancement. I now have an MBA degree, restructuring my own business, and work full-time. I have white mentors. My failures was not caused or created by white people. It was me. As a Christian woman, there's no color in God's children. I taught my children to love all, and now teaching my grandchildren to love all. So tell me this, if I believe critical race theory right, now all of a sudden, my sister-in-Christ Kathy is my enemy, and I don't love her no more? No. In God's eyes, she will always be my sister, and I will always love her, as well as my other Christian brothers and sisters. See, my family come in an array of colors and races, and I love them all. CRT embraces hate, and as a child in the predominantly white schools, I was loved and not hated. Children are not born to hate. It is taught to them. You are shepherds over God's blessings, and will have to give account one day. I have one question for you, my brothers and sisters. At the end of the day, who do you answer to? Man, the government, or God? I ask you to pray, and may God's will prevail, and God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you. Nice pictures. The next speaker is the Union County Democratic Party, Lisa Walker and Nyla White. You have five minutes.
Good evening.
Yes. This is the last speaker that meets in the, in the 60 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Walker with the Union County Democratic Party, and I'll be sharing my time with Nyla White, a young member and student. I'm afraid that the misguided hysteria in the press over the past few months has swayed this board to a knee-jerk reaction to implement anti-diversity policies. This is the complete antithesis to the recommendations made by the CACD team that you hired, formed, and blessed six months ago. Watching the staff feedback last month on the, on the analysis of the recommendations, I was struck by how many times the, the analysis said, "We're already doing that," or "We need more information." And yet, you have chosen to disband the council that spent months collecting data and have deep knowledge and deep insight into the challenges at hand. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different result. Perhaps the board finds current results acceptable, hence the reluctance to do something different, like following the recommendations of the CACD. I suggest everybody watching this and everybody sitting here, go to the Black at Weddington, Marvin, and Piedmont Instagram accounts and reread the 400 anonymous accounts from students, teachers, and staff about their painful experiences of day-to-day life at Union County schools. Yes, these are anonymous due to fear of bullying, retaliation, discipline, and possibly even termination. It's all there, from microaggressions to blatant racially charged incidents that have put Union County's public schools in the local news and national news. I urge this board to reconvene the CACD and heed the recommendations of the committee. Ignoring racism does not make it go away.
Maya Angelou once said, "If you don't like something, change it. If you can't change it, change your attitude." My name is Nyla White. I'm a rising eighth grader at Weddington Middle School. I am bilingual, a straight A student, and an entrepreneur. I am here to voice my opinion as we attempt to go back to normal in just 19 days. Systemic racism, a form of racism that is embedded through laws and regulations within society or an organization. I stand before you as a concerned student, concerned for my safety, future, education, and those around me who look like me. No student tries to live in fear for being authentic or telling the truth. While you think that there is nothing that can be done, there is plenty to do. In accordance with their core beliefs and values, you believe that capable visionary leadership at all levels of the organization that is constantly focused on the aim of the system is necessary to sustain high-performance results that inspire and engage students and other stakeholders. UCPS, an organization that you represent, this society has trusted you to make sure that their students are safe regardless of race, religion, or sexual orientation of their voices are heard. Use your voice. Use your power for good, if not for yourselves and for the students and staff you represent. A leader is more than the person who leads or commands a group, organization, or country. This isn't someone that can just be pushed under the rug. Stuff like this happens every single day. It's from the Black at Weddington, Marvin, and Piedmont Instagram pages. Do you really want to see UCS make national headlines again? Being a leader means that you will do what needs to be done regardless of race, regardless of the consequence of it, means that there is a positive impact. Please make a positive impact by implementing all the recommendations of the CACD. Again, I ask, do you really want to see UCS make headlines on national news? Gracias por su tiempo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That ends our public comments. Next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from July 13, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 13 meeting.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No. Nine oh, thank you. The next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor? Aye. Any noes? Nine oh, thank you. What? What? Eight oh. I'm sorry, you're right. Eight oh. I keep saying that wrong. Eight oh. Next up on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Houlihan.
Thank you, Ms. Heintal. Good evening, board members. A few items to review this evening. First of all, we wrapped up our six-week summer learning camp this past week. I want to give a huge shout-out and send a significant amount of kudos to our site administrators, teachers, support staff, and students. We definitely saw high-quality teaching and learning happening, but at the same time, our, our kids and teachers had a lot of fun. So, great job during the last six weeks, and we appreciate your commitment. I also want to give a big shout-out to the planning committee and drivers who staff the book bus this summer. In partnership with Promising Pages, we distributed 23,000 books to 4,000 students in our summer learning camps and in the community. The bus will take a, a break, but will be ready to roll again next summer. I also want to welcome our teachers who are new to Union County Public Schools. I had the pleasure of greeting them today. I want to say officially, welcome to Team UCS. We're happy that you have chosen us to start your career or continue your teaching career. Next, we have two schools that are already in session. Wolf School began classes July 19, and Union County Early College began today. I'm so excited for these students and our teachers, and I want to give them a big shout-out to the staff at these schools for welcoming our kids back with open arms. And last, as, as you know, when you hear band instruments going on and see athletes on the field, you know, one thing is for sure. It's back time for fall sports season. Our students began practicing recently to get ready for games and competitions, and those will start in just a few weeks, and we look forward to the upcoming fall season. I want to wish all of our student athletes and members of our bands and other clubs much success as you begin the school year. As a reminder, the first day of school for all traditional schools is August 23. Board members, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Houlihan. Next is COVID-19 protocols. Dr. Houlihan?
Thank you. So this evening, we are pleased to review our COVID protocols for the coming year. Mr. McGraw and our two lead nurses who are here, Wendy and Christine, have been working with our local health department leaders, consulting with our principals and others on, number one, lessons we learned from last year. Number two, how we believe to best successfully manage the opening of school and what our protocols will be. So, Mr. McGraw has prepared a presentation this evening, and so I will turn it over to you if you want to kick us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm pleased to provide you information on COVID-19 protocols and updates for the 2021-22 school year. So, a couple of things. Over the course of the COVID pandemic, we have used guidance in the Strong Schools Toolkit. That was updated last on July 29, 2021. Also, we consult weekly, and I say we, myself and our lead nurses, consult with our local public health director and his public health staff. We will continue that throughout the COVID pandemic, and we appreciate their support and consultation. So, the first item I'm going to talk about, this school year, face coverings as of August 1, 2021 are optional for UCS students, staff, and visitors on our campuses. We did communicate that out after the July 13 board meeting by Blackboard Connect, and we made parents, staff, and families aware of that. What are the responsibilities of the administration and staff and students? Well, you have to make a choice whether or not you wear a mask. It is a choice. Our administrators will make sure our staff members understand that. Our staff members will make sure that if a student or a staff member makes a choice to wear a mask or not wear a mask, they're comfortable with that choice. If there's issues with that, a student or a staff member needs to report that to administration. One thing I want to let the public know and parents know, face coverings are a parent's choice and their student's choice. We're, we're not expecting our staff members to monitor face coverings and do any kind of monitoring. Procedures for students, they make a choice. We want them to feel comfortable with the choice they make. Physical distancing for the 2021-2022- they make. Physical distancing for the 2021-22 school year remains the same. Three feet physical distancing is what continues to be the recommendation for student-to-student interactions. Six feet physical distancing is still the recommendation for student-to-staff and staff-to-staff interactions. So what do our buildings look like at that point? They look like they did at the end of last school year. Cafeterias, our school teams are going to be asked to keep six-foot physical distancing between classrooms. On playgrounds at elementary schools, we'll continue to ask our staff to keep classrooms in the pod-type setting and keep classes together. Hallways, we can't have both directions in our hallways this year. It is no longer required to be one direction. We can use lockers this year. However, students will have the option to continue to carry book bags. We just do not allow rolling book bags in our schools because they are tripping hazards. We will allow water fountains to be used. However, water fountains, we still encourage them to be used as bottle filling stations, but you can't, water fountains will be open. So how are we going to handle COVID-related positive cases and suspected cases? The first thing I want to ask the public, our students, staff, anyone who comes into our building, if you have COVID-19 symptoms or you're positive for COVID, stay home. Make sure you stay home. Don't come to school. Don't come to work. What is a close contact? What is the definition? It remains the same this year as last year. A close contact is deemed, if a person is in close contact within six feet of a positive COVID person for a period longer than 15 minutes, for accumulated, during a 24-hour period, that person would be deemed to be a close contact to a positive COVID case. Quarantine, it still continues to be recommended that 14-day quarantine is recommended after the last exposure to a positive COVID case. We do have the option of 10 and seven days this school year. We will utilize that in certain scenarios. However, we must remember, we must follow all the non-pharmaceutical interventions if we take those 10 and seven-day options. Those would be proper face coverings at all times up to the 14-day mark, and also making sure that we're six-foot physically distanced from others during that time up to the 14-day mark. So one thing I want to let the public know, if a person is vaccinated and asymptomatic, quarantine is not required. However, you still are asked, and it's recommended, you get a COVID test three to five days after the last exposure. Also, until you receive a negative test, you would be required to wear a face covering. Do we verify that people are vaccinated if we're investigating a case of COVID-19? That is the only time we would ask for verification of a vaccination status. If we're investigating a case where a person is deemed to be a close contact, that is the only time. We do work closely with Union County Public Health on contact tracing and on positive cases. This school year, we will ask for public health and their contact tracers to assist us when we have close contacts. Our nurses will continue to be involved, but we feel like some of that, the health department can help us with contact tracing. What happens if someone is a close contact to a positive case, a student? UCPS is not offering a remote learning option, which was Plan D during the 2021 school year, for the 21-22 school year. So if a student or a few students in a class are quarantined because they're deemed to be a close contact to a positive COVID case or a student is positive, we will use Canvas as our instructional delivery method. If an entire classroom is quarantined, the school and the teacher will work with students and their families on the continuation of learning. That could include a virtual learning for that entire class. For children who have specific medical needs, documentation should be provided to the student's principal, and the appropriate team will be convened to consider the accommodations needed for that student. So let's talk a little bit about what school health and custodial support looks like for this year. We're going to continue to have a nurse in every school. Our two nursing supervisors are here tonight, and I am so thankful for the job they've done, and what a great job they do leading the school nursing team. We still will encourage proper hand washing. We will also have hand sanitizer available if hand washing cannot be done. UCPS custodial teams will continue cleaning surfaces once per day, and we will prioritize high-touch surface areas such as door handles and areas where a large number of students gather. The UCPS custodial team will also clean and disinfect spaces where we had a COVID-positive case during the past 24 hours. We did that all of last school year. Our custodial team did a wonderful job, and our facilities team, thank you. So how do we plan to communicate this school year? We will communicate with staff and families if we have a cluster of cases. That would be five or more cases in one setting. We also will communicate if we have several classrooms closed or a group of, an area that's closed. We do not plan to communicate this school year on every single COVID case with staff and students and families. We'll work with Union County Public Health, and this is one thing I want to reiterate, if a family or if a staff member receives a call, it may come from a public health contact tracer, or it may come from a school nurse. So that is a change from last year where we are having public health assist us. If the public wants information on COVID-19, we're asking them to go to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website or the local public health website, which is on the Union County website, to get information about COVID-19, local metrics, and state metrics. So visitors and facilities use. We are going to allow visitors back on our campus for academic-related reasons or for student support. Examples of that would be tutoring, read-with-you, scouting, where they hand out materials, or PTO, where they have lunches for our staff, that kind of thing. We will continue to limit visitors on campus for non-academic-related reasons, such as there's no visitors going to be allowed for eating lunch with children, and also classroom celebrations. We still have to physically distance in those areas, and because of our need to physically distance, we'll have to have no visitors for lunches and classroom celebrations. One thing that we installed a couple of years ago is our video doorbell systems. We did that for security. We will be utilizing them for visitors at this time. That not only helps with security, it also will help control congestion in our front offices and in our hallways. We'll ask parents and visitors to use those video doorbell systems. One other item, we're going to reinstate facilities use agreements this year. We will be asking people, they can turn in the facilities use agreements to schools, and our facilities department or administration and operations will handle those agreements. So field trips and assemblies. We will reinstate academic-related field trips again this school year. However, we will encourage schools, if opportunities can come to the school without having to go to other locations, we'll try to do that in some situations. We did that during summer camp with, like, Discovery Place. They came to our campuses, and our students really enjoyed that. But we will reinstate field trips. Schools will be allowed to have assemblies. However, we have to remember physical distancing, and that may mean that we have certain numbers of classes to keep them physically distanced apart and control contact tracing. So employee procedures. Employees will return to face-to-face environment during the 21-22 school year. I want you all to know, employee safety continues to be our number-one priority. We will keep the COVID helpline open this school year for our staff. If an employee is symptomatic, exposed, or test positive, they should call the COVID helpline. Please remember, that's only for our staff. That is for staff to call the COVID helpline. COVID testing and vaccines. We will continue to refer students and staff to a healthcare provider for testing if testing is needed. Vaccine appointments are available at Union County Public Health. Our health director asked me to let everyone know he has vaccines available, and he does encourage that. UCPS does not require staff or students to receive the COVID vaccine. That is not a requirement for UCPS. So what are our next steps? What are we going to do as we move forward? Tomorrow afternoon, we're going to meet with all of our principals, and we're going to review all of these protocols, the COVID updates with our principals. They're great leaders. Our administrators and staff will also be updated on these COVID updates. We will also update the COVID facts on our UCPS website. That can be found on our Back to School page. That'll be up later this week. Also, we appreciate the partnership with Union County Public Health and our local public health director, and we'll continue to get updates from him on COVID metrics and meet with him weekly. Thank you for your time, board members.
Questions, board members?
I am. Well, please.
Mine's is quick, Gary, because I've had some folks interested in this. When will the facilities use agreements pick up again?
Reverend Benchon, what I've been telling people is after I presented to you tonight, we will begin the process of approving facilities use agreements again. We've already received some applications, but once we're finished tonight, we can begin the process of approving those if feasible.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Gary.
I just wanted to reiterate, UCPS will not be doing COVID testing on our facilities for staff or students, correct?
That is correct. We refer people who need a COVID test to their healthcare provider.
And number two, the governor has required certain state employees to receive the vaccine or have enhanced testing procedures. That does not apply to UCPS staff. There is no vaccination requirement at UCPS for staff or students, correct?
No, sir. We do not have a vaccination requirement for students or staff.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. May?
Hi. So did you say if they're in exposure and they are vaccinated and they're asymptomatic, then there's no quarantine? But do they have to wear a mask?
Yes, that is what, they need to receive a, it's recommended they get a COVID test within three to five days after being exposed, and then it is a requirement that they wear a face covering until they receive a negative test.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, it's a requirement?
We consulted the local health director on that, and if you are vaccinated and you're considered a close contact, three to five days after, it is recommended you receive a COVID test, and then you should wear, he felt that it should be required to wear a face covering up until you get a negative test. I shouldn't say he, it is a...
What if the test that you take at the five-day mark comes back negative?
At that point, you could remove your face covering. You just need a negative test to remove your face.
Just depends on how fast the test is going to come back.
Correct.
Are the rapid tests acceptable?
Yes, sir. They are now.
Okay.
Just, can I ask a question that kind of goes on with that? One of the things that's in the toolkit, and I want to say the toolkits is all recommendations, correct? No requirements?
That is correct, Ms. Heintal.
Okay, so my question is, there's three exceptions to quarantine. You didn't mention the second one. Are we not doing that? People who have tested positive for COVID within the past three months and recovered and do not have symptoms do not have to quarantine?
No, we would, that would be an exception to quarantining.
It would be, okay.
It would be.
But they don't have to get a test, and they don't have to...
That is people who have natural immunity after they've tested positive. That is correct.
I'm just confirming. Okay, so there's, okay.
There are three categories.
Okay, thank you.
Is it going to be the same this year for staff, that if they have to quarantine, that they can get paid without using their leave time?
We do have COVID leave. It has to be approved. We ask that our employees call the COVID helpline. They will be referred to our HR team, and then our HR team would work with them to make sure that it is an approved COVID leave, and there is COVID leave that pays them.
And just, sorry, Jared, but it's actually called, it's our contagious leave. It's sanctioned under the state of emergency, I believe. Is that right over here? So we would ask employees to call in, verify that through the helpline and with HR, and then we'll process that.
Till last year.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, if I may. From last year, what is a normal class size? Maybe able to answer that?
So it's depending on what grade level and what level.
Just give me one.
If you go to an elementary school, first grade, 15? So K-2, 1 to 18 in a class.
Okay. Also, there was another question about the order in the hallway. So I know last year, they were only going in one direction, correct?
Initially, that's what we did, Reverend Kirkpatrick. However, near the end of school, we allowed traffic, foot traffic, in the hallways to go both directions. So near the end of school, we did allow that. As the toolkit at that time was updated, we allowed that.
Okay. I guess my concern is, looking at, we're getting ready to start school, and I know where my stance was previously, but things do change, and things, sometimes you can see things from a different perspective. I think I'm concerned about how things are pretty much going back to normal, and things are not normal. And so that's a concern of mine, and listening to healthcare experts, I commend you doctors and nurses because it's a lot of work. You all went to school to tell us what to do and what not to do, okay? And so I appreciate you all. And so hearing a lot of what the recommendations have been and what we should do, and really, we're going back to, maybe 90%, we're going back to a place of normacy within the school system throughout the day. Does that not concern us on what the outcome could be rapidly? There was something that Sarah May brought up, and I still need clarity on that. If you can answer that question, then I can ask my next question.
So I will say it is of the utmost importance, as we review these protocols with our school administrators and principals, that we focus on the mitigating measures that we can have in place. That would be physical distancing. That would be keeping classrooms together as much as possible, keeping students in pod-type settings. Quarantining and contact tracing, those are important things as well. Is it concerning to me? We have to follow the protocols that we have in place. It's been, we've worked hard. We had a successful school year last year, and I think we can this year as well. Do I think there'll be COVID-positive cases? Yes. I mean, I think we're going to have COVID-positive cases. Are we going to have close contacts? Yes. But we followed the procedures we did last year. We were successful. It took a lot of hard work, though. I'm looking at two ladies over here that worked 24/7, 365. And if not for the hard work of all of our UCPS team members, teachers, bus drivers, we wouldn't have been successful. I know that's a long answer, but we can, we can do this, and we can be successful. But the public needs to know, we will have positive cases. We'll have close contacts, and we'll deal with those. We'll work with our local public health officials to address those.
I think it's, go ahead. Go ahead.
I think the other part of this, and a lesson we learned last year, we use the word flexibility a lot. These protocols are going to have to be reviewed weekly, daily, monthly, and as we need to make various changes or recommendations, we will come back to this board every month if we have to, to kind of give you an update on where things are, where we can improve, where we can ease off a little bit. And until we get into the building, we really won't know what those protocols would be. But this is our baseline, we feel strongly, that starting this school year this way, based on these mitigation measures, we will always come back to the board with updates as we need to make changes.
At least monthly at our meetings, we should go over the protocols and discuss them at every monthly meeting. Also, I think that it's important that parents and students alike understand that if they're a close contact, there's going to be quarantines. So that's something to keep in mind. But we all need to work together, just like we did last year, right? The choices that students and parents make on weekends and after schools, outside of school, will affect cases in quarantine. So we just have to say that. We had that last year after spring break, when we opened up for five days, and there was a couple weeks that there was a lot of quarantined kids and things like that. But it's all about what's going on, and it could affect cases in quarantines.
There was something mentioned about the... Those students that are asymptomatic. I wanted to get some clarity on that. So if a child is... Has tested positive, but they are asymptomatic... I can't remember what slide it was, and I could be wrong, so y'all help me if I'm saying something wrong.
I think we were talking about if they're vaccinated, they're a close contact, and they're asymptomatic. Then they can remain in the building, but they need... It's encouraged to get tested three to five days after the last contact with the positive person, and face covering needs to be worn until they get a negative test. I know that's a lot of information, but...
Okay. I'll probably get it in the morning. But like I said, I think that... I believe that you all are going to do a good job. We're going to do a good job, but I am concerned about it. And when I look at our health specialists, I'm looking at them. I know that toolkit has recommendations, and a lot of times, we overlook recommendations. But sometimes recommendations are what we need to take heed to. And our nurses and those that are here, you know, are proven, you know, that we should take heed to these recommendations, because sometimes they can see what we can't see. I was speaking with a doctor, a very nice young lady. We had a conversation about it, and she gave a great example of how we have kind of transitioned from the mask, not just in school, but just period within our country. And it's like being on a plane. You start out, you start out, and you have to put your seatbelt on. And then, once you get to a certain altitude, you're able to take your seatbelt off. But then there may be some turbulence that comes, and you have to put your seatbelt back on. And with this new strand that is moving, we don't know how it's going to affect our children, because when teachers... If teachers get sick, then we have to find substitutes, you know? And I know that we haven't even started school yet, but I'm from... I think it's best to be safe than sorry. And I'm just really concerned about how the school year is going to end. Not end, excuse me, start. Because children who may not have symptoms, we tell parents not to send their children to school when they're sick. But working in the school system, I saw parents send their kids to school with mucus that was green as a leprechaun, okay? Which is a strong indication, your child needs to stay home. And so they don't care. Some parents just don't care. And so they will send their kids knowing that they are sick, but will send them to school anyway, you know? So I'm very concerned about what the year is going... How the year is going to start. I wish that they all could wear masks. I do. But I'm just... I'm very concerned about what's going to happen, because a child who may not have symptoms may have a family member that's able to get sick, and then what happens, another level of challenge where that parent has to go on a ventilator. And now we have a parent of a motherless or fatherless child. And so I'm not an expert, but I want to listen to the ones that are, so.
I understand what you're saying. Last year, though, during the beginning of COVID, there was districts across the country that were opened without masks. And I understand, and we're... You know?
Got a quick question. I know with contact tracing this year, you said the health department might have employees contacting people. Are we communicating that out to parents and people in effect? So if I get a call from the health department, nine times out of 10, I'm going to screen it or hang up on them, probably, because I think it's spam or something.
I understand, Mr. Hams. We've talked to them about that, because their numbers would be different than ours. We are going to communicate that out to our principals, to our stakeholders, letting them know we have a partnership with Union County Public Health. We will be utilizing their contact tracers, as well as our nurses will still be calling some people. But we felt it was important coming back five days a week. Our nurses are going to be asked to do all the things that they've done in prior school years, and then COVID, the public health contact tracers can help us with that, but we will communicate that out.
One more question. The testing's three to five days to get a test if you're in close contact, recommendation?
Yes, sir. Three to five days after last exposure to a positive COVID person.
Okay. So say, three days, come back negative, fourth day, fifth day, will that be two days, get the test back? They start getting symptomatic then, if they happen to be back in school, how would that be handled?
If they develop symptoms, they would go home. And it's just like any other presumptive positive case or symptomatic person, they would go home, because they would be symptomatic if it was COVID-related symptoms.
But at that point, they would be... They'd follow the recommendations?
They would follow the timeframe of a presumptive positive COVID person. It would be 10 days. From the onset of symptoms, it would be 10 days they would have to go home.
Jared, I have a question on the same topic. So I'm trying to visualize the administration of the... We have a confirmed case. We have close contact. And we have some that have been vaccinated, others that have been tested positive within the last three months, though it's proven it extends beyond three months. Some have to wear masks, some don't have to wear masks. Like, how is this going to be administered? I'm perplexed. So there's a close contact, the call will be made to that person that was in close contact at that point?
So if we're notified of a positive COVID case, whoever that person identifies as a close contact would be contacted, then during the investigation, we would have to determine all the situations you were just talking about. Is the person vaccinated? We would ask for verification only during that time.
So they have to show their card, or they can just say yes?
They can say yes, but we're going to ask them to show their card and for verification of vaccination status, just during a close contact investigation. We would not ask for vaccination status at any other time. During the course of the investigation, though, anybody within six feet for greater than 15 minutes is a close contact during a 24-hour period. So that's what takes a long time for our nurses, for the contact tracers to look at each case. Each case is individual. We have to handle it individually.
Well, that's true. By the time a contact is made, you may be three to five days out already.
We hope it's before that timeframe. We will talk to our principals tomorrow about seating charts in classrooms and cafeterias. That does help with contact tracing. That's one reason we need the contact tracers, because that takes a lot of our nurses' time to investigate.
And then on the other scenario, where you've tested positive within the last three months and have recovered, you do not have to wear a mask, correct? It's not stated that in the toolkit.
You do not in that scenario. If you have the natural immunity, you've tested positive, and you're within that three months.
And you'll ask for that positive COVID test as verification, or how?
Yes, sir. We would have to probably work with the public health to get verification on that. So we receive a daily report of 18 years of age and under positive cases for Union County Schools, so we could go back and verify using that list of students.
Excuse me, Mr. Howard, did you need me to say that on the mic?
So we receive a daily list of students aged 18 and under who have tested positive for COVID. If we need to verify someone is within that three-month period, the natural immunity, we could go back to that list and verify the names of anyone who has tested positive.
How about if they tested positive during the summer, when school was not in session? You still get that?
We still get the list. We receive those daily from public health. Our nurses have still been working nonstop.
I'm sorry. Another follow-up, because this three-months thing has me troubled. I mean, it's proven, there's lots of studies out there, that the immunity extends well past the three months. We're sticking with the three months?
We still go with the three months at this time. That's still the recommendation. If it were to change, we can update our protocols. We could update you all, but right now, it's three months.
All right, thank you.
So about the immunity, is it... When you talk about natural immunity, if you have COVID, do you automatically have it? Okay. Because I've heard no, and I've heard yes.
Yeah. It is assumed, and it is a natural immunity if you've had COVID, tested COVID positive.
I think that... I think the contention among... It depends on who you talk to, is how long that immunity lasts. There's no doubt it's there, but there's contention between, is it as strong as immunity as a vaccine? Does it last as long as a vaccine? In other words, is it as good as a vaccine for as long as a vaccine is supposed to last? I think that's the subject of debate, and I think that goes into Joe's three months, you know? Hey, we could find out in the end that you have immunity the rest of your life, to a certain extent.
Well, clearly, the NCDHS has said that if you had it in the last three months, you're better off than vaccinated people, because if you're vaccinated, they want you to get tested and wear masks. So...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a healthcare expert, but I mean, immunity, you build up a natural antibody, which is a barrier against the disease, right? But then you also have your programmed immunity cells after the fact, your T cells and B cells that know how to attack it, know how to defend it. So that's the natural immunity that they're talking about, so. Just more clarity, sorry.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Muriel.
We've had quite a few... Go ahead, Reverend Benchon. We've had quite a few parents who have reached out about their kids going back to school. Some of them have said that they're not going to send their kids back because of a lot of the health challenges that some of them have, and their concern of safety. And of course, we hear conversation on both sides of the fence, you know? I'm not going to send my kids back to school if they have to wear them, and I'm going... And I, you know, like I said, on both sides of the fence. And Joe just said, you know, he acknowledged, I'm not a health expert, and neither am I. But I hope that we really take the time to listen to the health experts' recommendations on what is the best route for us to serve all children within Union County Public Schools. I told my congregation, during the pandemic, it is so much that has come from this pandemic, more than just sickness, so many other components, that some people will never be able to understand coming from their side of their perspective, or their issue, or their reality, let me say that. And so, like I said, I know I voted on last month, but I'm just one person, of course, but I speak pretty much what my heart says. And I really feel that these babies need to have on masks, because there's no possibility of true social distancing, and I know they are very uncomfortable. But I don't play with sickness, you know?
And Mr. Kirkpatrick, they have every right to wear a mask.
I understand that they do.
They do not ban masks from school.
I didn't say they did. But what I am saying, yeah, I was there, so I know what we voted on. I'm not saying that we said that they were banned, but what I am saying is, for the safety of all kids, sometimes we all have to be in the boat so that we can get to the other side safely. And so sometimes it may be a little uncomfortable, but I'd rather be in the boat and know that we're going to get there safely, instead of me trying to create my own paddleboat, and this boat is going and what have you. So I guess it's one of my preacher examples or whatever, but...
Any other questions for Mr. McCraw?
Anything different this year going forward? Should we have an outbreak on a team or a team member or a coach? What are we doing there?
We would follow the same protocols, Mr. Price, with any other student. If we have a positive case, we would look into close contacts. The positive case would go home. The close contacts would also be asked to quarantine as well. But we would handle that the same as we did last school year.
That is a great question, though, because the toolkit has adapted since then, right? With regards to the close contact and the vaccinated and the tested positive within three months, so those students would still be eligible? Is that like part of the, you know, the state standard?
Athletics follow... At the end of last school year, they were following the strong schools toolkit. So in Union County, if we have a COVID-related positive case or issue in athletics, we would handle that the same as we do in the school building.
Because we had a team that had to forfeit last year, like the whole team did due to close contact, right?
That would only be if they couldn't participate.
In the regular season, you mean?
No, during the state playoffs. I believe it was the Whittington women's soccer team, maybe?
I don't know if they had to forfeit. I know we had some issues on athletic teams. I know there were certain 14-day windows where teams could not participate. I can't remember if it was in the playoffs or not. I'm sorry. I can't remember on the soccer team.
But it will be taken player by player, and as long as you can field a team, you should be able to play, correct?
Yes, sir. We would not over-exclude and exclude an entire team. We would investigate, and we would only exclude those deemed to be a close contact.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. McCraw. Thank you. Okay. Next up on the agenda is policies for review.
Good evening, members of the board. You have seven policies under policies for review, and if there's any questions about any individual ones, I'm glad to try and answer those for you tonight. Thank you.
Could I just ask real quick, just for Michelle, for other people watching or involved, could you just go through the process for adopting policies or changes to policies? Because they may have been anticipating some kind of vote tonight on these. If you could just go over the process that we use on this.
Absolutely. Anyone can pose a recommendation for a change in policy and provide that to me or... Anyone can pose a recommendation for a change in policy and provide that to me or to the Policy Committee Chair, Mr. Price. And the Policy Committee will look at all recommended changes. The Policy Committee looks at a policy initially, and it comes to the board for first review like these seven policies are. And then it goes back to the Policy Committee, and we look at any recommendations from stakeholders in the interim. And then if the Policy Committee then approves that recommendation, it comes back to the board on the consent agenda for for approval. And so it's a two month, essentially a two month process. In exigent circumstances, the board can vote by a super majority to not follow that process and to fast track a policy. But it's it happens periodically, just depends on the issues.
And I would also say that anybody interested, they should go back and watch the Policy Committee meetings. We had a robust discussion about these policies last week, so I would encourage anyone to go back and look on our YouTube table, any of them, the channel that you should watch the committee meetings.
And something I just noticed recently is, which I think I'm going to commend to High Renter Team, is there's actually like playlists for each of the individual committee meetings. So you don't have to kind of search through by date. If you just pick the playlist, it'll show you the committee meeting.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Okay, next up is Board Comments. Do any board members have any comments?
Madam Chair, I just, Madam Chair for tonight, there was a couple of comments that were made throughout the evening, specifically some during the the public comments about the teachers, respect for the teachers, the appreciation of the teachers. And, you know, as a lot of those comments was going forth, all I could do was just play back in my mind this board's unprecedented appreciation of the teachers that we've rendered, the items of support that we've provided, and the respect that we have for our our teachers and and Team UCPS at large. So I just want to say to the public, as I've said to many that have emailed, if you have any concerns, our email address is readily available. Please email us with those concerns, and they will be addressed. To the folks out there that are working for Team UCPS, talking to your fellow coworker is not a complaint. That's just a conversation with your fellow coworker. If you have a complaint, if you have an issue, if you have a concern, it does no one no good if you only talk about it in the break room. At some point, you're going to have to put that concern on paper and send it up the chain and keep going until you get resolution. That's the only way that Dr. Houlihan, his cabinet staff, or this board will know of any and all problems that exist in any area. So I just want to once again share that we do care. We want you to be successful, but we cannot help you if you're only talking to the one next door. Put it on and let us have an opportunity to bring you success. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Mr. Sides?
Thank you, Mr. Hyattel. Tonight and over the past month sometime, we have received a lot of comments, emails, questions, both in support of our masking option and also asking the question why we are not following the guidance of our federal government or our governor who is closely aligning his policy with that of the CDC and the CDC policy itself regarding specifically masking. And I wanted to address that. I've tried to do it individually, but can't always get to them on a timely matter. And to me, it's not about as much an argument over the masking, the science of masking or the masking of or of vaccine, the science of of vaccine or not. I feel those are decisions for you, your family, and your doctor. What really it's something deeper than that as far as a trust issue. If you've been following the news, you know that our southern borders, Texas, Arizona, southern parts of California, are basically open. It's been estimated that to date, some 1 million illegal or undocumented, however you want to call it, have come across the border from not just Mexico, but other South American countries, Cuba, Haiti, others. And in June alone, it's estimated some 170,000 have come across. And that's just the ones they've been able to count. Who knows how many others have not, you know, been been caught? It's estimated that that number could be by the time this year is over with some some 2 million. Due to the the current policies, basically, our borders are open. Are these that are found or caught or or give themselves up, are they tested for COVID? No. Are they vaccinated? No. What happens is they're put on buses and transported all throughout our country. We could even have some here in Union County. Now, if this isn't a super spreader event, I don't know what is.
Now, wait.
Have have we heard anything from the CDC specifically on this issue? Have they addressed that, you know, protocol, other protocols ought to be in place to address this? No, I haven't heard any. So if our government is not going to address such a an event such as as estimated hundreds of thousands of people going across the country who have not been vaccinated or not been testing, then how are we to believe, I have a hard time believing, what they are instructing the rest of us to do? So it's a matter of trust. And and frankly, until this issue is addressed in in a fashion as stringent as they are attempting to address the issue with the rest of us, then I just have an issue with trusting the recommendations. And that is my response to why I feel like as a board member, I'm going to make my own decision that may be at times independent of those recommendations from governmental entities such or and organizations, health organizations such as the CDC. And that is my personal opinion.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I I I think that was uncalled for personally because that has nothing to do with what we as a board is responsible for as pertains to these children and families in Union County Public Schools. And as you said at the end, that's your personal opinion, but that is a situation that I feel as though is very degrading to some who may have families who come from those countries and those areas, and it has nothing to do with the business that we are called to handle. And when you talk about the trust in the government, that's exactly why we and so many others have a concern about history being taught. Because for so long, people have not wanted to teach history because people have not taught it properly and people have not had confidence. That's why there are some people who have a concern about even taking the vaccine. And if any culture should have an issue with trust in the government, all right, since we're going to go there, it should be dark, light-skinned people of color such as myself who have been used for so long as guinea pigs and who have been disrespected for many, many years. Now, that's my personal opinion. So to deal with what we're called to deal with, and that is educating kids and making children safe, I think that's what we need to keep at the forefront. When it comes to masks and when it comes to vaccines, I have not at one time, you do what you want to do. I'm vaccinated because that was my choice. And there are some people who have their own personal choice on why they choose not to be vaccinated, and that's their choice. I encourage people to do it, but that's their choice. But when it comes to the safety of these children and with a mask and with recommendations from specialists, doctors, and pediatricians and nurses, that component right there, they've gone to school to do the work. They have stayed up countless hours to be experts, and we should listen to them, even if we don't agree with them. We should listen to them. Because if I have cancer, if I have sugar diabetes, I don't take it upon myself to diagnose myself and tell myself what I need to do to treat this. I go to a specialist. As much as I hate a doctor, not personally, but as much as I hate going to the doctor, I listen to them. So that other part about them being bussed and coming, that that's some of the stuff that we say is uncalled for and has nothing to do with what we're called to do at this table.
I I disagree totally, which has everything to do with if we are being questioned why we are not following the explicit recommendations of certain entities. I am merely giving my explanation why I have a hard time with trusting when an issue such as this is right in front of us. That is why I'm have a certain lack of trust if an issue such as this can't be dealt with, which could affect our own community. We don't know.
And you're absolutely right about the trust component. And as I said before, when we talk about.
That's my trust.
I understand that.
Okay.
But again, I say the trust component, if anybody should have a problem with trust, it should be those children who are part of Rosenwald Schools during segregation, and they asked for separate but equal, and at the end of the day, they still didn't get it. We want to talk about trust. We want to talk about those individuals who have been segregated and and disregarded because of the color of their skin, where individuals who wanted a hosp to be hospitalized and and medical treatment, and they didn't get it because they were black. So if anybody want to talk about trust, individuals don't want to talk about systematic racism and what is? If anybody want to talk about trust, anybody at this table want to talk about trust and why we shouldn't trust whoever, I wouldn't expect it to be you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, one of the things about board comments, they're just that, their comments. And everybody's going to have their say so on, you know, what their comments are. And, you know, a lot of things I said that I don't always agree with, but that's that individual's prerogative. That's their that's their comment. You know what I mean? And you're absolutely right, my good friend, you're absolutely right. But the comments are not generated for us to squabble, their their comments to be heard. And the issue that Mr. Sides brought up, that is a national issue that's being talked about around the country. That's not a an isolated issue that is being talked about. That's one of the many things that's being talked about. And I just want folks to be able to feel free to give their comments and not, you know, feel as though that if they give their comments, it's is going to be challenged.
Anything else? We move on to announcements. Anyone have any announcements? I do.
Policy Committee meets August 25th at CDC at 9 o'clock. We do understand that's two days after the start of school, so that is subject to change.
Thank you.
The Strategic Planning, Information Technology, and Transportation Committee is scheduled to meet August 25th here at the PDC at 8 a.m., and that's subject to change to depending on agenda items.
The Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, August 24th, 8 a.m. Zoom or 9 a.m.? Is it 9? Has it been 9? 9, sorry, I apologize. 9 a.m. Facilities Committee Thursday, August 26th at the PDC at 9 a.m.
We are. Okay, we'll talk about finance in time.
Did you say?
We typically do that. It's difficult for some of our members of our Finance Committee to make it here and back and do their job as well.
Thank you.
Any any other announcements? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 8-0, thank you.